I already have one.
You do?
Yeah, I didn't say we were gonna take, but I did want to make a momentous survey.
You said take.
No, I didn't. Call the meeting to order. Salute to the flag, please. Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. First, we have a special order of business. We have the spotlight and excellence of the Wang School performance of Frozen. So I guess we have someone registered to speak. We'll go to the speaker first.
I'm assuming that would be me. So, thank you guys for having us. We're from the Wangs, so we appreciate the time greatly. But with that said, I want to point out something, and she's gonna kill me for doing this, but she found out Friday at noon on a vacation week, and Ms. Neary put something together. And I'm stopping to mention Ms. Neary because after 35 years in the district, she's put on performance after performance after performance. And what she's done for the group of kids you see here, but not just the group of kids you've seen here, year after year after year, she's given the kids a place to belong. She's given the kids something they're excited about at school. If they're not on a sports team, or a science club, or an art club, she puts together these performances, and they're just incredible. Unfortunately, she is retiring this year. We are asking her desperately to come back and help us in her post-retirement with the performances as she's hiding up in the shadows. But with the superintendent's permission and the school committee's permission, if we could give Ms. Neary a giant round of applause for everything. So with that said, we put on a performance of Frozen Junior, and this is just a little taste for you guys.
Mr. Stahl, we do have one speaker for us. Just we'll have the speaker go first, and then we'll...
That's why I asked if it was me who was registered.
Well, you are very special, but it wasn't you, so, sorry.
Susan Yuvani?
And this is awesome. Thank you, Mayor Leahy, Superintendent Boyd, central administrators, and school committee members, for this opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding item 3.1. I am a second grade teacher... Oh, I'm Susan Yuvani, 234 Nesmith Street. I'm a second grade teacher at the Moore Elementary School. Additionally, I'm a proud member of the United Teachers of Lowell, and I am public school proud. It's a privilege to have the opportunity to participate in the public education of children who call Lowell their home. Further, it's an honor to work shoulder to shoulder with outstanding public school teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, cafeteria workers, and public school administrators who have dedicated themselves to their profession with one goal in mind: the success of the public school students of Lowell. I have witnessed firsthand community members who go the extra mile to develop positive relationships with our students. Finally, I am often humbled by the sacrifices parents make to provide their children with what they need for success. They are public school proud. Next week, February 24th through the 28th, is National Public School Week. It's a special week where we, the invested participants of Lowell Public Schools, will have the opportunity to celebrate our incredible successes, big and small, along with the entire nation. The Wangs' incredible presentation this evening will be a perfect and timely example of just one of the many big successes in the Lowell Public School system. But let's not forget the little successes that we don't see publicly admired, like the boy that can now navigate his electric wheelchair through the halls of his school, or the girl who finally passed her algebra test. These are all worth celebrating. We, the United Teachers of Lowell, are asking you to take the pledge to support public education. Most importantly, it is a time to reflect and recommit to what our Lowell Public School children need. I wish to share with you a copy, if you don't mind passing this out, thank you, of the resolution created by our U.S. representatives announcing Public School Week. I believe a similar version of this resolution may be announced by our state representatives sometime this week. It's simple to take the pledge, and it reads, "Today, I pledge my support for public education. America's public schools educate nine out of 10 students in the United States, more than 50 million, regardless of ability, race, wealth, language, religion, or country of origin, to prepare them for future endeavors. By pledging to support our nation's public schools, I also am pledging to strengthen the future of our country. Please be public school proud with us." Thank you.
Thank you. And now you're up, Mr. Stahl. I didn't know if Mr. LaLashaw was gonna sing too.
I'm done, I'm done, so it's all the kids now.
All right, thank you.
Hands down, this is the best day of my life, and quite possibly the last.
Olaf, you're melting. Hang on, little guy.
My own personal Ferrari!
Anna?
Aw, you little...
Uh, uh, let me handle this.
Anna, but Elsa froze your heart.
The only frozen heart around here is yours.
Is everyone all right?
There's so much I'd long to say, say it all, beginning with today. It's like a dream I thought could never be.
Elsa, you're free.
Let it go, let it go. Show us what you can do. Let it go, let it go. The magic wand is you. 'Cause here we stand in the light of day. Let the sun shine on. I take this warmth within and send it up above. Goodbye to dark and fear, let's fill the world with light and love. And here surrounded by our family at last. We're never going back, the past is in the past. Let it go, let it go. And we'll rise like a brave storm. Let it go, let it go. 'Cause here in cold our love. Here we stand in the light of day. There to the cross, there is grace.
Nice job, everybody. Thank you very much. Mr. Dakota?
To say how proud I am would be an understatement for all of you, and how many of you managed to come out on a vacation week. Speechless. And again, testimony to Ms. Neary and the work she does.
All right, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Sure, Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, real quick, I think this will be the last Neary we have in our system. We've lost a few Nearys that I'm gonna miss, but this one here I'm gonna miss a lot, like Andy. Andy almost made me break down over this. The Wang School has always delivered for Lowell, and it keeps delivering, so keep up the good work. I hope to see you in the Starklosa Bowl there, Knowledge Bowl coming up. And just, I'm proud to be on the school committee when I see schools like the Wangs, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sure, Mr. Dakota?
One more thing I have to add, I'm sorry. We would be remiss to ignore the choreographer who did phenomenal work with all of the kids. Mrs. Flor. Following in the tradition of our previous mayor who said, or actually, Mr. Kenny, who believes that he's had everybody over the age of 30 in the city, I actually had Mrs. Flor as a student and as a choreographer at the high school, and her daughter was Olaf.
Oh, very nice.
So, great, great job. Thank you.
So if I could, just thank the students and staff. It can't be stated too many times, this is a day off from school, that these young people, their families are coming in here to share their talents with the school committee and the community. And Susan, I think your words are taken to heart here and well said beforehand, millions and millions watching worldwide, this is middle school in Lowell. Thank you, Mr. Stahl, thank you, staff, and thank you, students. We're inspired every day to serve you each and every day, so thank you.
Thank you. Minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes... Minutes of the regular scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, February 5th, and the special meeting by the Lowell School Committee on February 5th. So, need a motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoey, all in favor? Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. The permission to enter is before you as written. One, I want to call out because this was an opportunity that I wasn't aware of that our new mayor brought to my attention with the custodial uniforms. So that is on the agenda here. This previously was unfortunately a cut that had to be considered by the school committee, yet it is something that's certainly valued within our school communities. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm guessing from your prior tenure on the school committee, you were aware of this?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So this is courtesy of Mayor Leahy Community, and I do think this will make a tangible difference in the way our members of our community perceive and support our school custodians and custodial staff.
Thank you. I just had one question. I thought this was in the contract, so I didn't know how it got cut over the years. Does anybody have any history on that? No? Okay. All right, so, any questions on permission to enter? Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, I have one question. So that, that 7,000 that's in there, that's for shirts for custodians and our clerks. I mean, excuse me, and our security guards.
That's correct. Ms. Turner?
And it's just roughly, I'd just like to know roughly, how many shirts is that? Just curious.
A hundred.
A hundred shirts? For 7,000? That's my point. That seems like an awful lot of money. I hope they have engraving on them and badges and everything. It just seems like an awful lot of money for me, that's all, for that amount.
You're not, you're not wrong in that, which is why I assume this question was taken up previously. It is the best price that was able to be pursued through the business office. We can take it back and continue to consider it, but I don't think you're wrong in that, Mr. Hoey. I can also tell you, with the personalized items we got for, you remember, the outgoing committee members, sometimes when you get things that are very specific to uniform type, as we start to order more and more, that's when the prices start to come down further and further. But here with just 100, once we start getting our orders up, I would expect the scale to start bringing them down.
Thank you very much.
Sure. I have one question, Mr. Superintendent, too. So, when I was on the school committee, and we put this into the contract, my recollection was, we didn't increase the, the, we didn't increase the money for the clothing allowance, but I thought that we gave them an option of four shirts because they're gonna be wearing them every day. So do we, is this something that we should take a look at? I mean, one shirt a week isn't really gonna cut it. I just thought, that's how it was worded before, that they had got an option for four shirts, and that way they could do laundry and do that. Is that something that...
It's definitely something that, it's what we want to go to long-term here, so we can certainly, with the committee's endorsement here and guidance tonight, we can bring back to you further assessment and analysis for additional. We can do any and all of the above.
Sure, if you could just find out how they get out of the contract, that'd be good. Thank you. All right, so, need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Ms. Dougherty? 5.2.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call, thank you.
Mr. Ho...
Yes.
Nope. Mr. Dakota.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Dakota?
I'm just looking for clarification on, we, Ms. Turner, the, we're talking to 100 shirts?
To clarify, I'm not sure if there were 100 shirts. There are 100 people in those positions, so at least...
So we don't know the actual number of shirts that this comes under? Because if we were getting 100 shirts, that's $70 a shirt.
Right.
In any, that's really, so if it's 400 shirts, then now we're talking a good deal. So it'd be good to know what that actual number is.
Yeah, with the permission to enter and approval, we can certainly bring that back to you. This allows us to engage in that actual contracting process, so if you recall, you may recall the one that was most public, there was the permission to enter on the copiers, for instance, then we brought back to you, because within negotiation, that changed slightly, if you recall, and we brought it back a couple of times. So with approval here, we can bring back to you what the final contract is, if that's of interest to the committee, and it still enables us to move forward and get the wardrobe out to the appropriate staff as well.
Thank you. Just for clarification, that would be good, because the idea of it was that we're not supposed to be buying a $70 shirt, but we're supposed to be buying maybe $20 shirts, and they're supposed to be nice, but they're gonna be, you know, used appropriately, and they could be torn and pulled and spilled on and things like that, so. All right, thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, 5.2, Director of Special Education, Mr. Michael Lovato, contract approval. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, committee. This is, before you, if you recall, one provision of the contract I want to point out, the accrual of vacation was brought directly in line with the accrual of vacation within my contract, 40 days, you'll see that within the public notification. Mr. Lovato is here. I want to again recognize the hard work he's done, in not only adapting to the community, but in very quickly bringing about some important improvements within the office, as you saw at the last meeting. So, we're bringing this forward with excitedly for committee approval for Mr. Lovato's contract.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Hoey?
Move to approve.
Just second, first, okay. Motion by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Ms. Clark, to approve. Roll call?
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Congratulations, Mr. Lovato.
Would you like to come up and say anything?
Just thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity to continue in Lowell.
Thank you.
If I could, as a point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, we also have one of our very active parents, Sean, in the audience, who, if you had, if there was any question, he would have been on your public speaker list, for sure. So, thank you, Mr. Tisher, for all of your involvement.
Thank you. Motions. First motion of the night by myself, request that Superintendent work with the fire department to establish an opiate prevention program at Lowell High School, seconded by Mr. Hoey. We have a speaker on this?
Yes.
Robert Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent Boyd, members of the school committee, happy to be back. Unfortunately, it's to talk about opioids. I think the mayor has put on a great motion, similar to a motion I put on in 2012. And at that time, we were able to bring all the stakeholders in the community together to kick off opiate abuse prevention awareness programs, 3rd through 12th grade. And one of the key stakeholders that came forward was the Lowell Fire Department. And they are a phenomenal leader in this effort, as Mr. Dillon knows, and Chief Winward will do great things at the high school. I think, you know, in 2012, we really launched an aggressive campaign to address opioids abuse in our schools, and we made some great progress. The program sort of died down with funding, and a few years later, we were able to launch some additional programs. But I do ask, when you enter budget season, to consider funding these programs moving forward. And I will share with you, you know, since I was at the high school, I lost probably half a dozen classmates. And, you know, we had a couple dozen kids here that hopefully don't have to experience that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you to the school committee for your continued support of these efforts, and hopefully Superintendent will continue to fight the good fight in opioid prevention. So, thank you, and I hope you all support the mayor's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac. Good to have you back.
Mr. Mayor, can I take an opportunity of privilege here, just to share? It's a dozen of your classmates, Mr. Gignac, it's my oldest brother. So you certainly have my personal commitment. My brother was unfortunately one of the first to pass when this epidemic began long ago. And I try to share that story out, as you did with your friends, to say there is a stigma that's associated with heroin and other opioids that we've got to remove, because that stigma is what causes people not to seek out help. And my hope here, by establishing this program, is that we can be proactive to alleviate that stigma, not only for those who are experiencing addiction, but the families who are trying so hard to support them.
Thank you. Mr. Hoey?
I'm definitely gonna support the motion, but I do have a few concerns. When we talk about opiates, I mean, that's all I've heard in the past three to five years, and I believe we should keep talking about opiates, but just as many people are being affected by vaping and cocaine and alcohol. We keep forgetting alcohol. I now, I no longer have people, children or kids in the Lowell Public Schools, they've moved on. My granddaughter just graduated last year, and she's in college over here at U Lowell. And a lot of those children, they're not children, young adults now, they get out of high school, and it's not only opiates, it's not only marijuana, it's alcohol is an issue that we gotta keep talking about. So, the only thing I like, I like the motion a lot because of the firemen, and I want to say a little bit more. To me, it should be alcohol and drug prevention. That would be great. Now, to bring the firemen into this, I think it's a great idea, and I love your motion. We have nine policemen watching 28 schools trying to keep our children safe. Four are at the high school, and five to cover 28 other schools. Now, I am a person that they believe don't want police. I don't want police in our schools. I'm just one person. I want one in front of every one of our schools. But I know that's probably not gonna happen because of how much money it's gonna cost us. But your motion might have started something for me. Why don't we look into it? Because I believe right now, instead of having nine SRO officers, I believe cuts have been made on the city side, and you should look into it, Mayor, that we might be down to seven. And I don't like that signal at all. But we might look into trying to put nine firemen in our schools. We got nine policemen. We might just want to add nine firemen. They don't have guns on them. They know a lot about CPR and first aid, and how to teach kids about fire safety and drugs. So, I'm gonna support your motion, but I believe we have a lot of work, and this maybe should all go to a subcommittee, because to me, we have a lot to deal with, and it's just not about opiates. I'm not trying to take anything away from opiates, but it's about drug prevention and alcohol use, to me. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anybody, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, I like the motion. This is something that's long overdue, like Dr. Boyd touched on, it's, you know, we felt it here in Lowell just as much as anywhere else. And having a program and opening up that dialogue with our kids is, it's a big deal. It's something that we really should have focused on more in the past, and so I'd be interested to keep up to date on this, Dr. Boyd, as we move along. I'd appreciate that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we want to amend the motion to include alcohol abuse as well?
Well, the only thing I want to say before you make the motion is, I kind of assume, isn't that still in Health Ed? Like, do you have?
We do, and I also think for the committee, there's actually an individual full-time working specifically around opioids, so I know directly who the contact is, I've had conversations. Anthony, I've talked to you several times, doing good work, I don't know if you know his name, last name to give him recognition off the top of your, off the top of his head. So this motion specifically, I know who the point of contact is, I can start moving very quickly. So if you want an adjacent or a second motion, I might suggest it in that way, so that way we don't slow the roll, so to speak, you know?
Thank you. Because, Mr. Hoey, what I, I just assume we still did that in health classes, that we spoke about alcohol and tobacco, but if we don't, we should bring that into discussion with the upcoming budget to make sure. Mr. Hoey?
I just want to say one last thing about opiates. Not that I'm not trying to bring that down, like that's not a big issue, and I know Mr. Gignac, working with Megan House and all those things, I'm a retired prison guard, and I know all drugs and alcohol are big issues. But the opiate problem that he's fighting, and he continues to fight, was mainly for females, and thank God, because there was never a place for a female to go to. Never. It's something they just started years ago. Years ago, men could go everywhere. They had county jails, they have all kinds of places for men. Megan House is a very, uh, important issue to me, and I'm gonna continue to try to help Mr. Gignac on that issue. And I didn't wanna, you know, uh, dump on this motion at all, and that's not what I'm doing. I'm just trying to say is, to me personally, uh, I, I, I have alcohol at the top of my list. Uh, every inmate I ever dealt with in my lifetime, that was their issue. And then they fall into these other issues. And sometimes we forget about alcohol, that's all. And, uh, thank you for the time, and, uh, I'll be with Mr. Gignac. I hope he stays around long enough, uh, when we talk about food later on, so. Thank you for coming tonight, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. If, if I can from the chair, just one other thing. Um, I just did want to mention all the good work that, uh, former counselor Cory Belanger is doing with the task force himself. Uh, the numbers are dropping for younger kids, um, so that's a good thing. It seems to be, um, cycling out, but it is still a problem in the city. But education has been the key. Um, uh, so we don't need a roll, roll call? Roll call? Yeah, do a roll call.
Um, this, since, after you said that, and I know this is my third time speaking, but across, across the country, opiates has declined, but not in Lowell area. Opiate deaths, it's increased actually in our area. I'm pretty sure of that.
I thought the last results did show that there's a decrease.
I think across the country down, but I think Lowell's, Lowell's hurt.
I, I thought we were down, but, uh, Mr. Dillon?
No, I just wanted to say something about those numbers that, um, I think number of deaths are down everywhere because we're getting really good at saving people. Uh, and so, I don't know what number, you might have seen a number that was, you know, they, they don't always tell the story. Um, but definitely more people are being saved. Um, but the, the numbers of overdoses are, have declined also in Lowell. As far as I know, in the la- last month, um, we had numbers that came out.
Oh, yeah, it was raw since nineteen, since, yeah.
Yeah, slowly, but it's coming around, yeah.
Thank you. Sure, roll call?
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darden?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Uh, next motion by Mr. Dakota. Ask the superintendent to review whether or not our schools have incorporated recess in their daily schedules. There's something there that says save the high school. I don't know if that was a misprint?
No, no, it was, it, it, obviously, there's no recesses at, at the high school. That was why, I had save the high school.
So, seconded by?
It had nothing to do with saving the high school.
All right. Seconded by Ms. Darden, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. I think it, it speaks for itself. We've been talking about all the schools making sure that they provide recesses for our children at the elementary and middle schools, and I'm hoping that that has been, uh, the case in all of our schools. Uh, again, except for the high school. Uh, and, uh, so I'm just, look, I want to see what that number is, if it's, in fact, they've all incorporated. And I think it's really important. Uh, those kids need to be able to release that energy that they've got, and we all know, uh, if you've had that opportunity to teach, uh, elementary kids, which I did, uh, for five years at the Bailey, uh, thank God for recesses, honestly. And I, and to not have it is just a, a, a disservice to both the kids and the staff, uh, could not, it, it can be disruptive. And I think we need to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Darden?
Um, I just would like to add, we had a survey, uh, where we looked at all the schools, and I believe we came up with the policy that there would be a minimum, they had to have at least, this is the part where I'm not sure, but I think it's fifteen minutes, at least fifteen minutes of recess. So, I think that should be part of this, you know, just review that you're doing to make sure they're at least meeting our minimum standard for recess. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
In, in response to that, even giving fifteen minutes in the wintertime, when it takes little first graders and second graders about five minutes to get their coats and boots on, and then you take them out for five minutes because you're gonna take another five minutes to take all that stuff off and put it in their cabbies. So, it ends up being a recess of actually five minutes. So, it's, it's still, you know, I wish it was longer than that, but it can't be. I know that. Uh, but at least even five minutes, I'll take that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Uh, next motion by Mr. Dakota. Ask superintendent to assign the responsibility of someone in the district to maintain a system-wide calendar of events that will be easily, easy to navigate for our parents and staff who attend many of these events. If they knew where they could go on our website to find out. Seconded by Mr. Dillon. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have been requesting something to this effect, uh, for the last, uh, at least five years, I'm guessing, uh, that I think the Lowell Public Schools is the best-kept secret on the planet. People don't know, not even, uh, uh, ten percent of what we do in our schools, after school, in the evenings, weekends, things that, you know, if, if they had any inkling of how many things go on in our buildings, uh, and I want to be able to tell the parent that they can go to the Lowell Public School website, and there's a calendar button right over here in that, on that website, on that webpage. And they can press that button, and a whole calendar comes up. They can press, well, I, I'm available to do, go to something to, on, tonight. You press that today's date, and a whole litany of, of, of events that are going on in the ci- city and maybe in the school that their child goes to, so that they can see it. Cause they, you know, kids don't go home and tell their parents, gee, there's gonna be a basketball game here tonight. Maybe you should come and see it. Things like that. I, I mean, it could be a track meet, it could be a baseball game, it could be a football game, it could be anything like that, or a performance of like The Wang, uh, you know, where if they make it easily navigated, you press this button, it'll give you the, the, the calendar with every single event for February nineteenth. Everything is right there. And then people will, I think, will start to take notice of all the wonderful things that we are actually doing with our kids. And I, that's, so that's why I put this motion out there.
Sure, just to share the calendar. Good, good idea. Any further discussion? All those in favor, oh, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I agree. I didn't even think of that side of it, but it's really promoting, uh, you know, promoting the school system. And like, that's, I'd have to agree, Andy, yeah.
Well, you'll think of it now with your kids coming up, so. You don't want to miss those events.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor, say aye. Um, next motion by Mr. Dakota. Ask superintendent to review whether or not some schools had administration interference with the selection process of their, um, school site councils. It should involve only, uh, parents only. Seconded by Mr. Houghey. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it, it actually does involve the principals in the buildings, uh, but I've been hearing, uh, from various parents and concerns about, uh, certain level of intimidation at some of these meetings and selection committee, and selections of, uh, parents to be on the, uh, school site council. So, I, I would like to make sure, uh, that everything is on the up and up on that because this is an extremely important portion of what Dr. Boyd is trying to accomplish here in the city. Uh, we need to have the school site councils be very active in, in our school systems. So, I, I want to make sure that it's being taken care of properly. Thank you.
Okay. I just had a quick question on that to clarify. Uh, do you mean that they, they're not diverse enough? Or they're just being the most popular parents that are being selected or?
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm hearing that there's been like, uh, a, a certain level of, of intimidation of, of going with a certain person to do, to fill this particular position. And I, I don't want to name any schools or anybody, anybody. So, I, I'm just saying that as long as we're, if, if everyone is above board on it and they're doing it the right way, I don't have a problem. But I've just been hearing that a couple of, a couple of parents have approached me about it, and so I, I wanted to include that, um, motion. Thank you.
All right.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I want to offer out to all of the committee members that Mr. Dakota put out there. This is an important aspect of our direction forward. Um, Ms. Martin, uh, committee member Martin's had a, a question, um, that I'm gonna get her a response to just about training. Uh, Ms. Phillips is our point of contact. Please don't hesitate, reach directly out to Ms. Phillips. As you're hearing that stuff, it's good information for her as she's working to provide guidance, clarity, and support. Um, certainly, I like to believe those types of reports are only perception, not reality, but nonetheless, one becomes the other. So, um, Ms. Phillips is working really hard at it. Please don't hesitate, pick up the phone, give her a call. Uh, that guidance and support's also helpful to her as being new to the community and leading this effort. So, thank you, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you. Mr. Houghey?
Yeah, just have one concern. I, I don't have the, I had something written on paper about this, but, uh, if I remember correctly, we're gonna train a certain amount of schools, and I was just concerned about training all the schools. That's all.
That was committee member Martin's request, actually. So, what I'll do is the response that comes to committee member Martin, we'll make sure we send it out to everyone. Uh, I believe the response was, um, and committee member Martin, catch me if I'm speaking out of turn here, the timeline, uh, kind of the when, where, who is gonna be supported and how, uh, to make sure that we can do these things this well. We're gonna get to a functional level here this year, not to an ideal level, but a functional level is, is better than where we've been, and then we're gonna continue to build from there. Um, so that we'll get that message out. Uh, Ms. Phillips is compiling it in a way that's concise, because I also have heard that was the, part of the ask. So, we'll get that out to all committee members. You'll receive that once it's prepared.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Uh, next motion tonight by Ms. Clark. Request superintendent provide the committee with a report on the feasibility of procuring licenses for Samor newsletter software for use at every school in the district. Report back, the report back, the report back should include cost of the plan for implementa- implementation, including training. Samor is currently used at the Pine Arts Magnet, Washington, and Lowell High School. Benefits include translation of newsletter content into a hundred languages and tracks the engagement. Seconded by Mr. Dillon. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Um, my understanding is that this is already being explored by, uh, by someone on Ms. Phillips's team. Um, but I, I really do believe this is something that would make good sense for our district. I think it actually aligns very nicely with Mr. Dakota's ask about a, a district-wide calendar. Communication of important information is key, and I would look that this would be added in addition to our current, um, methods of communication, paper, and also, um, the phone calls that we all get. Um, I, I did have an opportunity to have someone, uh, look at the Kamae translation, and, uh, they affirmed that it was, uh, easily understood. Um, and so, I think, uh, and my understanding is that probably procuring the licenses for the entire district is, um, would be hopefully less expensive than each individual school doing it on their own. So, and I think another good opportunity to also communicate out district-wide news. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So, just one question to Ms. Clark. So, this is a program that translates?
So, this is a newsletter. It's a, it's a tool that, uh, um, my understanding is it's pretty easy to put information in so that the Pine Arts uses this to communicate information about, um, school events, practices, games. And, uh, there's a button in the lower left-hand corner that, uh, is a translate button. And then the, there's a hundred different languages that are, you can select from. So, um, I believe this is put out on their Facebook page. Uh, there's a few different ways this could be sent out, um, to, to family members via email. Um, and it also then tracks who's actually engaging or, or, um, interacting with the tool itself. So, you'd be able to know, I think the Pine Arts said something like they, they get about fifty percent engagement. So, they're able to track that fifty percent of their families are, are using this tool to get information, so. Um, and, and they're with opportunity to improve.
All right. Is it, so through you, well, to the superintendent, is this something we can use on our website? Where you have that key and it just, you do one website and it just translates to whatever language you needed it?
There's, uh, Ms. Desmond actually used this at her school, so she might be more expert than, uh, me on it. But I have heard positive reviews on it throughout, so I think it's, uh, I think it provides a lot of opportunities, but I can't claim to be the expert that would know all of the functionality of it. I don't know, Ms. Desmond, if you recall from use at your school?
Yep. So, this is, we actually used it at, at the district level as well. Uh, so, it is a newsletter creator, and, uh, once your newsletter is created, it gives you a link. And so, you can put that link anywhere. So, if you were to put that link on the main Lowell Public School website, you would click on the link, you'd be brought to the newsletter, and then you can click translate, and it will translate the newsletter into any of the hundred languages. Uh, so, it, it comes in the form of a link. So, we would put that a- active link wherever we needed to, to, um, connect people to our newsletters.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. Houghey?
Just curious if there would be a cost in the software or anything like that? Or we already set up to have it on our system?
So, my understanding is that the, um, that the schools are purchasing the license themselves. So, what I'm asking or suggesting is that we purchase it district-wide. We purchase enough licenses for every school. And then also include it in our, um, minimum requirements for use, uh, as, this is one form of communication to our families with, you know, regular, um, whether it's monthly or bi-weekly population of information, you know, in addition to the other pieces that we're using.
Our early estimates, and I would like the opportunity to get the full report, but our early estimates is that it's a nominal cost if we lifted this to the district. So, it might be something that's doable without, um, quite frankly, it might even be without additional committee action. Uh, but I want to get the full report on that, which would mean it's less than five thousand dollars if it doesn't have to come back to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Ms. Clark?
All right, I would just say one more piece is, um, from what Ms. Desmond sent. It was, uh, you know, purchased at a district level before, but was not used at all schools. And so, I think it will be really important, like I said, to incorporate this into some baseline minimums of, uh, how schools are using this, how often they need to be using this tool, so that it isn't just left, uh, perhaps to be unused, some of these licenses go unused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next motion by Ms. Clark. Request superintendent provide a status update on the use of Maker Space at Lowell High School and the Butler Community Partnership School. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark?
So, my understanding is that currently neither of these spaces are being used, and I'm just curious, uh, for more information as to why, what would it take to get the spaces back up and running for use, uh, at, uh, at both of these schools?
Thank you. Could somebody tell me what these spaces are?
Yes, I think, this is actually a great opportunity to recognize, uh, Brian Martin's leadership as the head of school over at the high school. This was something he brought on over at the high school at that time through, I believe, a partnership and a grant. Uh, Maker Spaces in general are basically as the term is defined. Allowing opportunities for kids to make stuff, lots of different ways that kids can make stuff. This particular space at the high school was around, um, kind of the most modern technology at the time, uh, when head of school Martin was, uh, leading the high school, which was three D printers and, uh, uh, any type of, almost like engineering-type equipment at that time, uh, was the Maker Space at the high school. But, uh, Maker Space in general for the, uh, viewing audience, you might see, see these and experience these with younger kids. It's not including that type of stuff, which is hands-on, um, building and, and designing with really hands-on kind of, uh, large-scale blocks and building and, uh, anything to cutting. The one at the high school, though, was rather sophisticated six or seven years ago. The early data is that some, that because it was kind of the top of the line at the time, it's, it's, it's lost its relevance very quickly as well. Um, so, we do have our current science department, as well as our technology department, doing a bit of a review under, uh, Ms. Desmond's leadership. Uh, really looking at the six-year gap between now and when the new school will be built up because the new school will have the engineering resources, uh, the engineering labs that would take up this kind of role for our kids going to the new school. So, there's that six-year window. What do we do in the six-year window between our outdated equipment and what will be the brand-new equipment? And how do we go forward from there? So, Ms. Desmond is currently leading that review. I anticipate a report back from our teachers, um, March one, Ms. Desmond, is that the date we set? Uh, so then we'll do a review, and we can certainly get that back to the committee under any cover that the committee requests.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Uh, next motion by Ms. Darden, six point seven will be tabled. All those in favor, say aye. Uh, next motion, six point eight by Ms. Darden. Request superintendent develop a spending plan and a timeline for informing the committee and engaging the community on how the district will use additional funds generated from the Student Opportunity Act prior to April first, which is the deadline for submitting to DESI. Seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Darden? Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just, um, this was information I go out through the Mass Association of School Committees. I happen to be reading their newsletter, and it's clearly stated that DESI is expecting us to have some sort of plan. Prior to that, we need to talk as a community, with our stakeholders and amongst each other, um, what, how we want to use this additional funding that's coming from the state. Obviously, you know, we're doing the student fair funding approach to budgeting, but I'm thinking, and that's going to come from the schools, but I'm thinking that there's some central office decisions regarding positions that have been, or, or roles that have been cut that we might want to be bringing back. I'm thinking of payroll clerks, transportation assistants, um, you know, I know we're probably not going to bring back all the, uh, library aides and all that, but there were a number of cuts that we really need to address, so I'm looking to get a plan from you guys, uh, when you'll be giving us that information and sharing it with the community.
I think it's a great motion and very timely. We just actually got this information two weeks ago, and the April 1 deadline is, uh, the deadline, we're still very much in conversation with DESI. It is set in statute, but it does conflict with our strategic planning timeline and the budgeting timeline that this committee has adopted. We've done something on, uh, behalf of, uh, this motion here. We updated the strategic planning update to include a slide on this, uh, that Ms. Phillips can share out because they are so related. I do think it is very timely, so just wanted to thank, uh, Committee Member Doherty for putting this on the agenda, and we will definitely get to conversation on this at the strategic planning update, uh, the alignment of the two and where the committee can expect us to come forward with this as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Howie?
Yeah, just one quick question there through you to the superintendent. I know the House and the Senate passed this act, uh, but did the governor sign it yet? Do you know that?
I haven't gotten that update yet. I also haven't gotten any update of whether there was any substantive changes. The poverty level was one that was, uh, being questioned as to whether they could recalculate. So we're still working from the same number that we've shared before of the 12.7. You'll hear within the budget update, uh, that's on the agenda. Ms. Turner's going to share with you how that number reflects what it actually means, uh, in terms of resource opportunities for the district, uh, which are less than, obviously, the 12.7. I haven't gotten that update, and actually, uh, Committee Member Howie, uh, the last update I got was from you, so if you don't have it, I'm going to guess I don't have it. I think Senator Kennedy gave it to you directly, so if he hasn't shared it out, uh, I haven't heard anything new since our last interaction. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the message.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion, uh, 6.9 by Ms. Doherty. Uh, per December 2018 motion, request superintendent invite leaders from citywide family council to make their annual presentation updating the school committee on the work to engage families. Seconded by Mr. Dakota, Mr. Doherty?
Uh, thank you. Yes, this was before the current administration was here, so it occurred to me it might be good to put that reminder in. Uh, December of 2018, the committee voted unanimously, um, to really help facilitate the communication between the citywide family coun- council and the leadership. Uh, and one way to do that was to have an annual report, uh, from the leadership at the citywide family council. Um, I believe the motion was to have it happen in February, so we've kind of missed that deadline, but as soon as possible to have them come and tell us what they've been doing and really discuss, um, ways that we can be supporting them, because, you know, we want family engagement. We have to present that from the top down through our schools. Um, so that's the intent of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Uh, next reports to the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. All right, we're going to try this again. Uh, this is constant evolution of getting feedback from the committee of the best way to get you information, how concise versus in-depth these conversations are. We've made a commitment to give a monthly update of strategic planning, but you don't have a strategic plan in front of you because we're not ready to bring that to you. You'll have that strategic plan end of April to fully vet, discuss, in anticipation of adoption with the budget end of May. So this is our monthly update. Uh, I think if you can, I'm going to yield the floor to, uh, Ms. Phillips in a minute, but if you can look to slide one. All right, so this has taken a little bit of, uh, Vice Chair Dakota's, uh, message that I've heard loud and clear, which is to also recognize the good work that many people have been doing along the way, and I think our strategic planning update each month allows that. Uh, so I don't want to belabor these points, but I thought it important just to put it within the public minutes and share with the committee what you, I believe, already know, and with the millions and millions watching worldwide, uh, that while we're undertaking this long-term planning process, we have not neglected any single day of the work, and we've accomplished a series of really important milestones, uh, at this point in our school year of the winter vacation. Uh, so you can see, uh, this is related to the site-based budgeting, but a coordinated process by which schools will be developing their own instructional plans, not just their turnaround schools, but all schools. Uh, the central office structure and restructuring the central office so that we are working for kids, for schools, for our community. A real important point of emphasis here, which, uh, I was kind of checking down the list of motions, 99% of those are now under the guise of Ms. Phillips's leadership, which was an office that did not exist, uh, just a year ago. Uh, now we have a fully functional community engagement and equity office that, uh, has the opportunity to respond in a concise way to the committee and to our community for those, those opportunities. The support system for our underperforming schools, you've heard this time and time again, last meeting you heard about our Renaissance Network. That's a first for Lowell Public Schools and a very important step forward, as you heard from our principals last meeting. How do I get to the next slide? All right. School site councils, we, we heard this one, uh, just a minute ago. Uh, a renewed commitment to our school site councils. We're committed to making sure that we have functional school site councils at every school. Should go without saying, but we know this is a new step forward for Lowell Public Schools. Uh, this one I'm really excited about. I'm hopeful that I'm going to have even more to share with you next month around our, uh, diversity hiring plan, and we've got work underway with our higher ed partners to make sure that, that plan is not something that we're just talking about, but something we're actually implementing. And, uh, Ms. Turner's going to be able to share with you here. Now you heard a little bit at the first quarter budget update. Now we even have higher confidence. This was, uh, goal number one that was shared with me by the committee at the point of interviewing, to make sure we could restore, restore these revolving accounts to appropriate levels of funding. Uh, you're going to hear from Ms. Turner about our increasing confidence that we're going to be able to deliver on goal number one here for this committee right now in year number one. Uh, I believe that concludes them, right? So we even got more, more, more accomplishments to go that, uh, and, but again, you're going to hear from Ms. Turner, a full migration of our budgeting process to empower our communities, our parents, our teachers, our principals to make decisions on behalf of our kids. That's no small feat, migrating from a centralized to a decentralized budgeting process. You're going to hear from Ms. Turner, uh, we have full confidence we'll be able to complete year one of that migration, which will be a multi-year process. And, uh, this is one that you don't hear too often, uh, but we've established here this year the first formal superintendent commendation program in the district. So, uh, each month, employees throughout the district are nominated by their supervisors to me and receive then a letter from me commending them for their work going above and beyond their job description, which is just a small token of thanks, um, but it goes a long way. And I think an important thing that we continue to recognize our employees each step of the way. Next slide. So just a small snapshot of the many, uh, successes of our first half of our school year, uh, to, again, ensure our community that while we are working to build towards long-term success, we recognize that each and every day is an important day for our kids. It's the only year of kindergarten, the only year of 12th grade that our current students will have, and we're making sure every day is the most meaningful day for every kid. And those accomplishments are only possible, uh, because of our team that is working on the ground each day, our teachers, our principals, our support staff, and those who support them centrally. Uh, Ms. Phillips?
Sure. Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So one thing that I want to acknowledge upfront is that the draft that is coming to you next month, um, will be detailed and comprehensive, and, um, feedback that I would like from you, um, you know, I'll do a brief update, but I'm wondering, um, whether you would want next month's presentation in this forum, in this setting. Um, in my prior work, we've had study sessions before where we've really been able to review and get into the details. Um, we also could go into a subcommittee, although there's not one that specifically is tailored to this. It could be the equity subcommittee, but, um, my recommendation would be around a study session where we can spend the entire time speaking specifically about, um, a draft that we'll provide, would provide to you in advance. Um, so between now and then, um, we will continue our, our site visits, um, to, to all of our school buildings, receiving input, um, from our teachers, and, um, we will continue drafting the, the first draft, which we'll provide to our steering committee for the first round of review and input. Um, we have several working groups that we already know, um, we need to bring together to go a little more deeply, um, most notably our pre-K initiative, especially because we're not the only provider of pre-K programs. Um, however, we receive all students into our, um, public school system, so that requires a working group with our community partners to really discuss through, um, what, what is the, um, most sense, what makes the most sense for us to put into our strategic plan that we're working toward for the next five years. Another area that we've, um, identified for a working group is serving our English learners. We're a very unique district in that we serve 23% English learners compared with about 10% of the state. So there's a real opportunity for us here to, um, to, um, really demonstrate how we can provide the best, um, learning opportunity for, for English learners in our district. We also, um, have identified secondary school planning for a working group, and then also our mission vision and, um, equity policy. So all of that, we want your feedback on it, but it would be difficult in this type of form, which is typically, um, you know, 30, 45 minutes, but it starts to get really long with all of the other business. So again, it, at the end of this brief update, you can let me know what would make the most sense. You would have the materials in advance to review. The materials, um, would be vetted in advance by our working groups and, um, our steering committee. So with that said... Um, so again, we're, we're engaging in this process so that we can, um, develop a, a strategic plan that's going to guide our work for the next five years. We've already shared with you our core beliefs, our fundamental commitments. I don't want to, um, to rehash that information, but I do want to focus on some new key concepts that have emerged from our school visits, um, inclusivity, the need for, um, a consensus around definitions, um, ways that we can capitalize on strengths of our district, and then some critical needs that we've identified. All right, so we have, um, at this point, completed more than 10, um, almost half of our staff site visits, so we will be completing the remaining, um, site visits, our school building visits, in the month of March. And I wanted to share some of the feedback that we're receiving. So one is around inclusivity, um, in recognizing that, um, you know, we have an incredibly diverse district, but not of all, not all of our students have been able to, um, benefit from the great things that are happening in our district, and so there has been, um, pretty consistent feedback that we do want to be inclusive, we do want to leverage our diversity, and we do want to clarify what does that mean, right? Having a clear definition. Um, we, we started by convening our, our first steering committee, and not only will this be a steering committee to vet our initial planning, but this committee will continue, um, throughout the next year, possibly a year and a half, to continue to advise us on our progress. Um, it, it is modeled similar to site councils, so we have parents, we have staff, and we have community members. So another key concept that emerged is that we do need to create consensus around definitions, um, especially around our goal of expanding high-performing seats. What does quality mean? What does a high-performing seat look like? Um, it's been clear that that definition is not just around academics, but it's also around, um, meeting the social-emotional needs of students. It's all also around, um, leveraging culture and language and, um, motivating students. And a lot of this work will also happen through our Portrait of a Graduate grant that we've received, um, where that, the purpose of that grant is to articulate a definition of student success that is community-led. So another key concept is capitalizing on our strengths. So there, there are a lot of positive programs, um, positive things happening at schools. However, when we disaggregate, disaggregate our data, when we look at who's participating in certain programs, who's attending, um, certain high-performing, um, schools, we do see disparities. And so, um, that is an area that we want to recognize what's working well, but we also want to recognize that all of our students may not be benefiting, um, from, from these programs and opportunities, and we want to ensure that we have equitable access across, across our schools and programs. So in, the next, um, key concept is identifying critical needs, and one, one area, as I mentioned, was serving our English learners, as well as our students with disabilities. Um, and then also understanding, um, the full implications of how students' hierarchy of needs affect learning strategies. So, um, students need certain supports to be able to learn, right? So, um, they need nutrition, they need, um, motivation, they need love, they need, um, you know, emotional support in order to even be able to, um, take advantage of the instruction in the classroom. And that's something that we've been hearing across our, our listening sessions, is that, um, you know, we need to address the, um, we need to address the non-academic needs of our students in order to fully leverage, um, you know, the, the instruction and learning in the classroom. And so, um, this is an example of the details that we'll start to get into, which is why I'm proposing that we go into a specific study session, so that, um, so for example, when we talk about defining high quality, um, there are, there are different ways that we can define that. Um, we'll, we'll narrow that definition through our working groups, but then, um, we'll want to share the feedback with you as well as the recommendation. Um, so there's an example of defining high quality, um, coordinating standard-based approach to zero-to-five learning. Again, we offer programs for three-year-olds, um, up through 12th grade, um, three-year-old, three-year-olds, specifically students with disabilities, um, but we offer four-year-old programs. But if we're going to have a, um, a strategic approach to age zero to five, we will have to work with our community partners. And then, um, revamping our diversity hiring initiative, um, we'll likely present on that at our next, um, school committee meeting. And then, um, objective four is acknowledging that we want great instruction for our kids, but we also want, um, extracurricular opportunities and enrichment opportunities for our kids at all of our different schools. And so some, some final opportunities within our plan, um, we recognize that we're a global city, and so our school district should reflect that that's, um, that's one of the points that's, that's special around Lowell, right? So we shouldn't, um, look in our schools and classrooms and, and just see regular K-12 education. We should be taking advantage of all of the language, the culture, um, the backgrounds of, of our, of our city. We have about 75% students of color, we have 69 languages, and is that interwoven, um, within the school environment for all of our... the school environment for all of our schools? And we want to acknowledge that we are a system of schools, but that it's also important for decisions to be made at the school building level that addresses the specific needs of each building. And so we are working through what does that look like to be a system? You know, expectations across the district that may be, that may be executed differently depending on the needs of the building. And then a, a common thread is access. So again, we have great programs, is everyone accessing them? Does every school have equitable extracurricular opportunities, equitable athletics, arts, you know, college, college-bound programs? So we want to ensure that every student and family is there making their decisions around which school they attend, that all of them have equitable opportunities. They may look differently, but they should have similar, they should have opportunities that will prepare them for future college and career at every single one of our buildings.
Before you get there, this, these are the added slides. I'm trying to make sure I can, I'm trying, I'm learning better how to read body language of committee members. I'm hoping that what you're seeing here is a lot of repetition. Because what that's telling us is that while we continue through the listening and learning, we're starting to validate some of the previous concepts that we had heard. You heard Ms. Phillips say halfway through the site visits, that's remember the commitment that we would visit and meet with every school site staff. So we're going to every school site to make sure that we hear from directly members of what we call our core team, the, the people who are working directly with our kids in our school facilities. That's in addition to, you remember the community forums? And in addition to the many listening sessions that we've engaged in together as a team, starting with the superintendent's search process that led to the leadership profile and so on that brought me here. You might remember in one of the first slides, I was able to meet the first benchmark that I committed to, which was 100 school visits by the 100th day of school. I feel really good about that. No small, no small feat, but each of those visits, I hear from people. One of those, some of those visits, we're serving lunch on Thanksgiving with our cafeteria staff and hearing from our cafeteria staff. While it's not all formal engagement, it's informal listening. And so the repetition you hear is validation that through these multiple sessions, we're starting to hear the same themes. Now that brings us to these next couple of slides here, which again is, was added to the presentation by reminder from Ms. Dougherty's motion, when I saw it on the agenda of the Student Opportunity Act. It's going to feed right into our next presentation, but I'll yield the floor for questions. But these slides here basically say this. We have an obligation, statutory obligation to submit a plan to DESI on April 1. The requirements for that plan are no different than what you'll get within the strategic plan. So the multiple listening sessions and the opportunity to listen, there's no further statutory obligation, but there might be a, a need for us to communicate with the community, here's what it means for the Student Opportunity Act, because there is some misunderstanding within our community of this being kind of a large windfall grant. This is $12.7 million, which is essentially the same increase in budget that you received year over year from the prior year to the next. It's significantly less than the first projection that came forward, if you remember, was 21 million. So the number that we were working with to this number is much smaller, which you'll then hear from Ms. Turner, is halfway absorbed through financial commitments that are already embedded within our contracts and within our payroll, commitments that we have within contracts for transportation, et cetera, costs that are just going up. About $6 million, you'll hear from Ms. Turner, and she'll give you the specifics in the budget update. So there's a smaller proportion of money that we're talking about here, and this is an increase in your overall operating budget. The strategic plan is going to drive that full operating budget. This is a subset of it that then has to go through this process here. So the big difference in the conflict, I would say, is between your timing with what Ms. Phillips just shared, there's a need for us to work through with you in terms of vetting, going through the steering committee, remaining true to what we committed to the community about hearing, listening, vetting, member checks, going back and saying, did we get this right, which we gave ourselves till the end of April 4. Now to heighten it up to the beginning of April, we knew it was coming, we've been sharing out that, you know, we're going through this process, knowing we're going to get additional money. We just learned two weeks ago that somehow we've got this additional April 1 obligation of what I might call paperwork. We're going to try to make this not an exercise in paperwork. We're going to be able to share with you a draft of what this might look like at our next meeting, so that you have a chance to look at it before anything goes forward. Right now, what I'm hearing from the department, the DESI, is that there's no flexibility in April 1 because it's set in statute, but there may be some flexibility by which the committee adopts the plan. So in that case, we may have an opportunity to submit a preliminary draft, which then comes back with amendments, which allows the committee to remain true to our word to the community, even though as superintendent, I might have to submit a couple of draft plans. I yet, do not yet have assurance on that. Those are kind of the ongoing conversations. There's a statutory requirement of April 1, which unfortunately conflicts with the commitment to the community of the end of April for the draft and the commitment to the community of the end of May for the budget. And this is not an extra grant, which I want to emphasize. It's not the same as us just doing a Title I grant. This is just a small portion of the overall operating budget from which you make some really important, hard decisions that we certainly don't want to heighten to a place where we're not prepared yet to make those commitments. So we're working through that. You'll get a draft from us of what we think about, think with that mid-May, or I'm sorry, mid-March. You won't have, you don't, as a committee, and we don't, as a district, have an obligation to do more community vetting, a double dip of community vetting, which I think could be confusing to the community when they're already providing input on the larger strategic plan. But we want, might want to take the opportunity to provide some informational sessions. What is this? It's not the big windfall that perhaps might have been communicated. It's not this additional grant that goes beyond our current operating budget. It's just a recalculation of the funding formula with an additional investment from the state in that overall operating budget. So that's what it looks like with the Student Opportunity Act. You will be hearing more about that. And again, thank you to, for Committee Member Dougherty for putting that on the agenda for tonight. And these were some added slides that you didn't have in the packet by virtue of that. Yield the floor for questions. The next presentation, Mr. Mayor, will feed right from this into the budget update. We can also take questions on everything at once, whatever be the pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, through to the superintendent. Could you speak to the commendation program, the, for your staff?
Yes. So what this is, is an opportunity for our principals and what ultimately will be supervisors to recognize somebody within their building, within their department, that's going above and beyond the job description. They then submit that to our HR department and they receive a formal signed commendation from me. It says, "Thank you. Your, you know, your principal has submitted your name for going above and beyond your job description in this way. Thank you for your hard work." We've seen people post these on their walls, recognize them anywhere, but yeah, it's a simple, simple just recognition because we've got people throughout and I sign those, sign those regularly. I believe we've issued 40 to 60 of them or so on so far.
That's awesome. I, I say it often, that when I left teaching and jumped onto the fire department, the one thing that I noticed is people are always thanking me when I'm on the fire department. They're always thanking me when I'm on the fire truck. And I was putting the same into my job when I was a teacher, you know? And I, I didn't get those same, "Thank you, we love you," you know? And it's, all we're doing is criticizing, so, you know, in a lot of ways, so this is great, yeah.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was thinking that maybe you could also take recommendations from coworkers. I mean, they, I think they, they could come up with things that the principal's not aware of about one of their colleagues and says, you know, maybe this person works, works in the shadows and does this work and doesn't want to be like singled out, so they don't advertise it. So I think if you kind of keep that door open for having staff provide candidates, we'll say.
I just try to thank as many people as we possibly can, so it's, you know, and recognizing them in a, in a way that's kind of individual to them, so I think that's a great idea.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm also thinking, you know, there are a couple outstanding questions, I think, from the administration. First off being a, a learning session, which I do think makes sense to happen in a, in a subcommittee, your choice, whichever, wherever you'd like that to be, which I think could be extremely helpful, certainly for committee members, but really for the community as a whole, which is the mechanism in place for that. I'd also recommend, because this is going to be a fairly intense budget season for us, for a lot of different reasons. Certainly, the, the increase that we're looking at is, is of great import. The shift to the fair student funding is, is a real issue. It's something we need to pay attention to. And the, the rise of our school site councils as active participants in, in our budget process. Those are a lot of really dramatic changes that we're looking from, to kind of put in place, and it's February, so we really don't have a lot of time. What I would like to recommend is, is as we move forward to anticipate, for the administration to anticipate, I think it would be particularly helpful this year if we do schedule in advance a series of finance subcommittee meetings. We've done this in the past where we've done kind of budgets, budget summits at, at various school sites. The last one I recall was, I believe we did an elementary school, a middle school, and one at the high school. And it was, you know, kind of an opportunity for parents and the school community to come and kind of hear about, you know, the changes that are going to be put in place for this process. But I think, you know, particularly when we're going to be looking at our school site councils to be so actively involved in this, that could be a great opportunity for us to have those conversations. Again, I know we're going to be hearing more about the actual training, but I think that this is something that could be incorporated into it. And so I would, I would make that recommendation as we move forward. If we can kind of build a timeline that includes, includes that, I think it could be really helpful in a year when we really are going to be instituting some, a lot of change in a, in a very short period of time, with a lot of zeros at the end of it.
Committee Member Martin, would you envision these? In my experience, we typically do these types of summits that are actually workshopping, where the school committee is actually engaging in content and there's, but in public. So the public can actually, there's another way that I could be hearing this, which is us sharing out, presenting and engaging in conversation. Which are, which of those two were, did you have in mind?
What I'm envisioning for these kind of preliminary meetings, the subcommittee meetings, would be really an opportunity to hear from the community, that we'd be sharing with them kind of the, the bones of structure of how we're going to do this, but really hearing from them about their, kind of their priorities, their, any questions they have about these new systems and how they can interact with this, with this new process. The, traditionally, our actual budget hearings are where, kind of where presenting the final, you know, where the administration's presenting to us final recommendations, and then the committee is making the determination line by line and, and hearing from the public line by line and then making, taking those votes over the course of time. So it's more of a, kind of a preliminary conversation that I'm looking forward to kind of lay the groundwork before we get to the actual budget hearings, if that...
Yeah, is that clear, Ms. Turner?
Clarifies that.
I have one point with that.
Beautiful.
Okay.
Mr. Arnie?
Thank you. If I could just add to that, I think really the intent with my motion, you know, was kind of remind us all, we've got this April 1 deadline, but to also get a timeline on the, on the calendar. And I would say, I, I love the idea of these preliminary meetings to get feedback from the community, but also before April 1, we need to have some idea where you're thinking of going with some of that additional funding, the state's requiring it, but I also would like to know, because I have ideas of my own about what I think of some priority positions that we need to bring back. And so I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. So maybe a combination of, you know, some preliminary listening, you know, what, what's the, where are the concerns with the public? And then a meeting where we're looking at some recommendations that you're thinking about to kind of feel us out about it. But the reality is that we have very little time and, as Ms. Martin mentioned, a lot of moving parts. So I'm, I'm, that was really my intent with that motion tonight, was to get a timeline in place to start looking for some places that we can do that. March is tough, it's knowledgeable, you know, there's a lot going on. And I wanted to also reiterate Ms. Martin's point about the strategic plan. I love the idea of sending that to subcommittee where anybody who is really interested and can attend will do a deep dive into some of this stuff and then report out on the floor, you know, some key findings. But I think it is very difficult to do that level of engagement when we have a full agenda of a bunch of things that we have to talk about. So I think it is, makes sense to have a separate night for both these issues. Thanks.
I think it's both well said. You know, we kind of have three things that I think the community's well aware of that are happening all at the same time. We've got our union partners here, they have open contracts, collective bargaining, which we've been very clear on and have a lot, a full timeline and a lot of energy devoted to. These two items, budget and strategic plan, all line up the same accordingly, so I think it's timely to make sure that we have the same energy invested. If this works well, what you'll be doing is approving an educational plan, and then the budget funds the educational plan. Absent a budget that's aligned with the strategic plan, we just have hopes and dreams, we don't really have a plan, because if we're not funding it, it's not going to happen. So they go hand in hand. Our intent is to align those two. We'll take it back, come back with a recommendation and make sure that you can be as heavily invested. I just ask of the committee, I know that that energy is there around collective bargaining because you're used to that energy. These two are as equally as important. Yes, I need help, Siri. There is... I'm trying my best. There is, so we'll bring that back to you as well. Thank you, Siri.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If I can, just one question about the strategic plan. And I just, when we go through this with the inclusivity, inclusivity and the agreed-upon definitions, capitalizing on strengths, identifying critical needs, things like that, are you, Mr. Superintendent, are you kind of saying when you got here, you feel that we are, haven't been doing this, or? I mean, this, I, I don't want to sound critical, but I just, this sounds pretty basic and for a five-year plan. Shouldn't we be doing this already? So you're saying we're going to really hone in on it, or?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think there's, the big theme here, the overarching theme that I've heard time and time again, is that we're doing really, really well by a good many young people within our schools. We're not yet doing well by all of our young people, so we have to figure out how do we scale what's working well for a good many and be able to scale that up for all. We see in some cases, so there's never the question of us not doing, we're doing it in pockets, and in some cases, those pockets are smaller, in some cases, they're larger. Those pockets could be classrooms within schools, those pockets can be groups of kids within schools. The pockets could be as large as some schools that are performing quite well. But it's not yet hit all young people. And the gaps we're seeing largely follow racial income and linguistic lines. So for some kids, we're hitting the nail on the head every single day, and you see that greatness with the young kids that you, some of you that graduated from our schools that are thriving. Others of our young people, we're not yet reaching. Committee Member Hoey speaks often about his experiences within, within Lowell specifically and the young population of special education that is, he's quite passionate about. For our young people, depending on who you are as a young person, we may be knocking it out of the ballpark for you. If you're, for other young people, we may be taking the pitch and swinging it, missing entirely. So our charge here, I think, with the strategic plan or our opportunity, is to really focus on this notion of equity, to really embrace this notion of eliminating gaps, and to make sure what's working well for some kids happens for all kids. So you, that's a long way around saying to your, your question is more complex because it depends on the population of young people. For some kids, your answer would be, "We're doing it all and doing it every single day." For some young people, the answer would be, "No, Mr. Mayor, we haven't yet found a way to reach that young person, and this is an opportunity for us to think differently about it." Fortunately for Lowell, the numbers are quite large in terms of the many kids that we're serving quite well, I will tell you, which is an honor here to serve as superintendent in that regard.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sure, I guess next report then?
Yes, this again is your, like the strategic planning update, this is your budget update, but I... but I, before I yield the floor to Ms. Turner, this is your mid-year update. So you'll hear within Ms. Turner, some themes from quarter one, where some of you are returning committee members from that quarter one update, but increasing confidence, because it's all forecasts and projections. So Ms. Turner, I'm going to yield the floor to you.
So the business office update will cover the review of the quarter two finances of the FY 1920 school year, and an update on the FY 2021 budget. The year-to-date budget report that you have in your packet shows that 43% of the budget was spent as of December 31, and that that includes 14 million of open purchase orders. When we did the year-to-date budget report, we ran projections on budget buster accounts, all of those typical accounts that, you know, bust us each year. The projected balances for each are payroll, where anticipated, and a projected balance of 734,000 due to planned vacancy savings. Transportation, there's a potential $700,000 for lower use of special ed transportation. This is a volatile account, this could change at any moment. The substitute account shows a potential $132,000 projected balance, however, the use of substitutes has historically increased in the, you know, the end of the school year and the better weather. The out-of-district tuition account, there's a projected balance of 893,000. We hope to not, typically what we do is we pay for out-of-district costs, and then we transfer it to the revolving account, so that the circuit breaker will cover it. What I'm proposing is not to move it to the circuit breaker, so we deplete the projected balance on the local side, allowing the revolving account to grow. Health insurance, there's a projected $500,000 balance. I propose transferring that balance to out-of-district to use more of the local money for out-of-district tuition costs, and again, grow the circuit breaker revolving account back to pre-fiscal crisis amounts. Any questions on any of those projections?
Chair, Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry, thank you. Just a couple. So first off, with the out-of-district, you know, using local funds rather than putting it into the circuit breaker account, that doesn't negate our ability to get the circuit breaker reimbursement, right?
No, as a matter of fact, what happens is, we get a reimbursement for last year, this year, the money goes into a revolving account, almost like a savings account. And it goes in there, and we typically move costs that are hit in our local budget, because our local budget is never sufficient. There's 11 million budgeted for out-of-district, 6 million is supposed to come from our local, and 4 million was going to come from circuit breaker. What I'm proposing is spend less of that 6 million that on the local side, instead of moving the cost over to circuit breaker, leave the circuit breaker alone and let that balance grow. So no, we're still going to get the reimbursement, it's just using less of the reimbursement for current costs.
So it's not, yeah, so it's not based on that actual account, we're able to use actual expenses to, as documentation, to trigger the cost reimbursement?
Right, this will actually grow the revolving accounts to what it should be.
Which is great. I had one other question on the projections, in terms of the salary projections. So looking at about $70,000 to the good right now, am I reading that correctly?
No, 734,000.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was one up. So my question was regarding the less expected hires, am I reading that correctly, that these are hires you're expecting to make before the end of the year?
It's saying that aft, we have a couple of more hires that are, you know, they're still going through the hiring process, so I'm assuming we're going to hire those people, and they'll, we'll pay them for the rest of the year. The 734,000 was me assuming those people would be hired. If for some reason they weren't hired, then the projected balance may be, may fluctuate and increase.
So would we, so your expectations here are based on, are prorated, based on a six-month year as opposed to, or I guess a five-month year as opposed to a nine-month year? That's already incorporated into it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
So we will provide specific recommendations to fully leverage these balances from budgetary efficiencies at our next meeting. So we'll come with the plan, for the planned, for the projected balances.
And if I could, just to make sure we elaborate for the committee, because this is some of the work that you do within forecasting. When you heard Ms. Turner say, planned vacancy savings, if you recall, you might recall from the budget adjustment we did together, and these were some of the questions that came up, we projected 100% of positions to be filled 100% of the time, even though some of these weren't planned to be posted until, in some cases, a couple of months later. We did that so that we could hit, we could have confidence hitting this point, because we knew we had the need to restore these revolving accounts, we had these needs to make sure that we could offset funding coming forward. It was an intended consequence of wise budgeting on the part of the committee in terms of forecasting very conservatively on your part, that enabled us to get here. So this was intended, it was planned for, and now we have confidence in the forecasting that put us in a better fiscal situation than in the past.
I wanted to emphasize one thing. When I explained that transportation could change at any moment, so we could get a bunch of special ed students in tomorrow, the same thing goes with the out-of-district tuition account. Right now, we have less students being placed out of district, but that could change tomorrow as well, so those are very risky accounts. The balances, these balances are opportunities to invest in three strategic areas. We would like to stabilize the revolving accounts, we would like to preorder instructional materials, so that classrooms are fully resourced on day one, and we would like to invest more in the Renaissance Network. Again, we'll bring those, a specific plan at the next meeting. Any questions on quarter two? So the next thing I'm going to go into is what we all are hoping to hear about, the chapter 70 increase. So the chapter 70 increase was, went from 163 million of chapter 70 funding to 175.8 million. That's a 12.8 million dollar increase. Sounds like it's a lot of money, but as you know, we had the same type of increase this past year. That money quickly disappears. We have to pay step increases of almost, approximately $5 million, potential raises over $1 million, $1 million in health insurance increases, and fair student funding hold harmless options. We haven't met with you to talk about what we want to do, but some of that money would go towards the fair student funding hold harmless options. With this chapter 70 increase, there was also a city required minimum contribution increase of $2 million. We have not heard from the city yet, well, how much of that will be cash? That could be all maintenance of effort, but we're waiting for the CFO to inform us. Anything, any questions on current, okay. So the next thing is fair student...
I just have one question, if you don't mind. So basically, we have about $9 million in increases?
No, 12 point, we have 12.8 million of direct chapter 70 increase. 12.8.
No, no, no. Costs.
Oh, yeah, well, if we're estimating, yes. If there's, you know, those are just estimates, it's not...
So you can look at it, Mr. Mayor, two ways. One...
We can't survive if we're going 6, 8 million dollars a year in costs.
Oh, yes, yes, you're hearing it correctly. Yeah, there's significant cost increases that this district absorbs, so the prior quote-unquote fiscal crisis that we often refer to was not due to a decrease in funding, it was due to the increase in, an increase in funding that wasn't keeping pace with an increase in expenses. So there's an expense side to the budget, which was, I was alluding to earlier, there's a perception that we have to inform and help to inform our community, there's a perception that this is just 12.8 million dollars. There's actually an increase in expenses, because this is a 12.8 million dollar increase to your, to our operating budget, it's not just an extra grant, it's 12.8 million. We know right now, if we have to forecast this budget, that there are increases of 5.4 million based on payroll increases, there are increases of over a million dollar for healthcare cost increases, and then there are some additional cost increases that we'll start to itemize for you, because we're forecasting now, in the month of February, we've got a forecast based on the algorithms that are at play right now. So essentially, more than half of those dollars already had to be absorbed just to keep the show going, to keep the district running without making any additional cuts.
And you're going to be able to refund, how are we doing with that food account that was way behind?
Well, with, as with the current year and how well we're doing, we plan on leaving the food service funds in the revolving account, just like we're doing with circuit breaker, we want to replenish the account quicker than what we promised the state we would.
So when will that be paid off?
Well, we had a four-year plan, 500,000 per year. We wouldn't have to pay it, what we do is we reduce the amount that we would offset the account. I anticipate that we'd do it in two or three years now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So the next part of my presentation is on fair student funding. Just as a quick overview, you take the entire budget, and you look at each line item and decide whether it's going to be centrally locked, or if it's going to be part of the school-based budget pool. We have 137 million of our budget in the SBB pool, which means it will be controlled by the schools. That's 67% of our budget, and this is just year one, so we're actually doing pretty good. And just some examples, principals, assistant principals, teachers, would all fall under the schools. And even if we put it in the school pool, we may put a guardrail that would say, must have one principal. So there are still guardrails, so that we don't just give complete autonomy to the schools without some direction.
So pause for a second, because I want to make sure there's clarity. That's not the amount of money that's in direct services to kids. There's several different categories here, so you have over 90% of your budget in, directly in school budgets. This is around the pool of dollars that we keep talking about, would work through with school site councils, that we've got to, there are things that are within schools that wouldn't fall there because of grants, because of different provisions of compliance in the law. So I want to make sure for the community that we're understanding, we're not talking about all of the money within schools, we're talking about a subset of the money within schools that fall into this part of the conversation.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? So the 67%, is 67% of the entire budget is going to be...
Within this pool of money to talk through with school site councils, it's a subset of the entire money that's within schools.
Meaning, does that translate to the full budget?
Yes, 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 yes.
So of our full budget...
You have two, you have several subsets, this is one of those subsets, the large... The largest subset.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
More or less, it's saying that 67% will be controlled by the schools, where the principal gets to make the decisions.
Correct.
Exactly. The community.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do this, I'm used to... Okay. So the slideshow here is just to quickly update you on fair student funding. The three goals of fair student funding is to ensure that we have equity, transparency, and flexibility. The FSF formula, it weights priority student characteristics to promote equity. What we've decided to weight would be students from low-income families, student performance, low performance, students or English language learners, students with disabilities, and then priority grades. We wanted to put an emphasis on early childhood, pre-K to 3, and also a ninth-grade transition weight. So these are the areas that we're giving additional weight to for our students. So the fair student funding formula actually has three components to it, it's the weights and policies. The weights would include a base weight of $5,000 for every student in the school, and then they would get, they would get additional student need weights, additional funding based on the needs of the students, so they would get a different ratio for all of the items that I listed on the previous page. The two policies, the two key policies to remember are a baseline service policy and a transition policy. The baseline service policy is really this. This baseline policy that you're seeing in front of you shows that we came up with rules. Schools must have one principal per school, one assistant principal per 400 students, one clerk at each school, classroom teachers, one per 25 students, allied art teachers, one per 120 students. So we came up with a bunch of rules, so that, to show what a minimal, what the minimal level of service a school would need in order to function. That's called your baseline policy. If the school received less than the amount needed to run this, we would supplement them with a baseline policy, policy amount.
Let me make sure we emphasize a point here. It's not to say that they have to purchase all of these things, it's to say, as a baseline, we want to make sure that every school has enough money to purchase these things. So they still have flexibility within a school site council to come up with different ideas, but we'll make sure within the funding that no school has less money than would be required to fund those decisions.
And again, we have guardrails, so there may be some, you must have, like a principal, you must have a principal. We're not going to let it be a school run without a principal. But most of it is going to be just guidance, not gar, like not demands. This right here is just an example to show you what...
Can I just ask one question? This is like very basic stuff, right, we're going over, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, I don't mean to be disrespectful, it just seems like it's education 101, I don't know why we're going over this.
Okay, so it's going to be a significant difference for how this, this district currently operates right now? So right now...
Don't we have all those basics in the school?
But we require every school to actually choose that. So we don't, we don't allow the schools to choose at all, we tell them what they're going to have. So what we do centrally is budget the schools' decisions for them, and then they make decisions around a very, very small amount of material supplies, basically. What we're moving towards is providing them with, every school with the money, and allowing parents, teachers, and principals to weigh in on what the individual needs of the school are. So they could make very different decisions, they could make the same decisions, they have that flexibility.
After the basic guidelines, was what you're saying, okay. All right, thank you.
So this would just show an example of what a school would have at least enough for. If we know that the enrollment is 522 at the school level, all of those rules that were on the previous page would apply. One principal, one assistant principal, because there's only 522 students, et cetera.
Again, make sure I'm clear, being clear, because this is the misunderstanding I've often come to when I've led other communities through this. This is not to say that they would have to buy these things, it's saying we're making sure they have enough money if the school community chose to buy these things. Some things are within law, some things are within contract, you don't have a choice there, other things then are flexibilities for the school.
Chair?
So as we're doing our training, because this is going to, again, this is pretty heady stuff, if we're looking at a school community that, say, their student site council makes the determination that despite having a large English language learner population, that they want to focus on arts, a laudable goal, I'm not saying, you know, please, I don't need cards and letters. But I'm just trying to understand that there, I mean, like every school needs to have, I'll go the other way, every school needs to have an arts teacher. Does the system then say, if they just, if a school site council chooses not to?
That's where it comes back to, you remember, at the first, we're going to have, each school's got to develop their instructional plans and priorities, that'll be worked through with guidance from Ms. Desmond and Dr. Guillory, so they'll work through with, making sure they develop clear plans that are aligned with the metrics they're trying to achieve. There then, funding has to align with those plans. Once they build out their funding plan to align to the educational plan, they're going to have another step that they have to do of supporting that with their district support team, to share, here's why we're making these decisions, here's how. And within that, they're going to have certain guidance, meaning you might have the arts, how is the arts being met for each kid? In some things, you might have actual locked decisions. You have to have a principal, there's not a creative collaborative leadership structure that you're going to come up with. Some communities have that. We're not moving in that direction right now, so that's going to be locked for them. So they'll go between locked and guidance, which is the difference in flexibility. To train people on this, we actually had, Ms. Turner did a kind of a card game with our principals and our school leaders around fictitious priorities for schools, and they had fictitious priorities, and how might they move these resource decisions within these guardrails in order to meet these priorities. We'll continue to work through that training, but there's a series of checks and balances to make sure that while the flexibility is there, we don't have these worst-case scenario decisions where we then have the responsibility of the school committee compromised in any way, because you're ultimately responsible for ensuring that things happen for kids. So we have a series of checks and balances, and some of those checks and balances is what Ms. Turner's working through now. Checks and balance, make sure they have a baseline amount of funding to make these decisions. Check and balance, make sure they've got a school plan developed. Check and balance, make sure they have school site councils, there's more people weighing in. Check and balance, make sure they have clear locked, here's what has to be purchased, here are guardrails, make sure you achieve this within your plan. Last check and balance, you've got to justify all of those things in front of a, we call them a district support team, but that's the people you're looking at right here. but that's the people you're looking at right here, along with our ELL director, our special education director, to make sure then we're, before it ultimately comes to the school committee, and we can be able to share with you all of these things were met. And this is what this, each individual community is asking for their budget to be approved. If we do this well, enough checks and balances while we still allow as much flexibility, there's going to be less flexibility year one than year two, because we've got to work through this in terms of building capacity, and quite frankly, the infrastructure to allow these things to happen. Because we also can't absorb any risk for the committee in managing this thing through. Each incurred cost actually has to be a bill that's paid somewhere, and that gets paid through Ms. Turner's office. She's the only one that actually works in money, so to speak. Everybody else is working in guarantees.
So, just to reiterate, there are three parts to this formula. One is the weights, which I'm working with the consultants on algorithms now, and we do different simulations to see if we should increase the weights or decrease them. The other two components would be the baseline weights. And as I was just showing these examples of what a minimum school should have, there are two other parts to the baseline policy. We have to have a minimum special ed service staff and a minimum to the ELL service staff that we have. We get that from the experts, and then we plug them in. So, the amount that they get for baseline includes the mandated special ed teachers and the mandated ELL teachers that they're going to have. The third part of the formula is the transition policy. And what that does is, we don't want any school to be harmed. So, we're trying to do a hold-harmless transition policy. We're not saying that a school will not lose money. They may lose money due to enrollment, but their per pupil amount, they won't see a decrease on the per pupil amount. So, they may get an increase to the per pupil amount and then still see an overall decrease to their budget due to enrollment decreases. But, those are the three components. And the only other thing that I have to say about fair student funding is just to summarize-
Pause for a second, because I'm trying to make sure I can read body language across. The term harm that was used, right now, we have an equality-based allocation model that is not an equity-based. When we move to an equity-based, what we're saying here is what ultimately happens is when an equality-based model, some get, would get less, some would get more, based on the needs of the student population. What we can move through here is a process where Ms. Turner's calling a hold harmless. Those schools that would go down from an equity, equality model, we can make sure that doesn't happen. So, we would make sure that doesn't happen through a transition policy. The only way you would be losing money is if you have less kids, not just because we changed our allocation model. And so, you can change an allocation model, which could essentially cause people to lose money. That's not going to happen if the committee chooses to go in this direction based on this presentation. The only way that would happen is if you have declining enrollment. Less kids requires less resources. You would have lost, you would have had less money even before.
Sure. Ms. Clark?
So, how was it determined that 67% of this subset of money was going to be school-based? Is that the weights and simulations that you're talking about?
That's the, that's the actual dollar amount that currently is there. So, that's what's there right now, is you have $137 million within this allocation of schools. What we've currently know, absent any decision, I shouldn't say we know, the assumption we are making is that we are not going to get a charge from this committee to reduce the amount of funding going into schools in a budget year such as this. So, making that assumption, what we know is that the dollar amount would stay flat. That then leads to the percentage that Ms. Turner's working with. It's the dollar amount that's there based on your current allocation model. Am I explaining that correctly, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
All right.
So, I just wanted to summarize what we're going to do next with fair student funding. We currently need to approve the weights and the baseline policy. Then, at the March 4 meeting, we will need to approve the flexibilities a principal has, which they have autonomy over. The transition policy itself, how much are we going to allow a school to go up or down, and the actual school site allocations. In early March, the schools will get their budget amounts. And then, April, in April, schools will present their budgets to the central office. And, and these are the proposed dates for school committee inclusion. May 6, we are going to present the budget. May 11 and May 18, which are both Mondays, we are going to hold a public hearing session. And May 20, we are hoping to have the budget approved on that day. So, now, you said you would like to have three preliminary budget meetings.
Yep.
Okay.
There is some-
I mean, I'd see those as finance subcommittees as opposed to additional budget hearings.
Okay.
Can I take an opportunity to offer a point of clarification, as I see our colleague from Lowell Sun is an important community? We are not suggesting that schools are only going to get the same resources that they had last year. We just have to make certain assumptions going forward, and we're not prepared to bring to you any use of additional dollars. So, we're making an assumption here right now, which I think is a safe assumption in looking for body language, that there's not going to be a request from the committee to cut funding to schools. And we'll bring back to you then, here's the recommendation for increased funding, which we certainly would expect, but not an assumption that we think it's premature to make that assumption absent committee guidance. So, we will be bringing back to you, and that would come to the committee in March. Ms. Turner, if there's an increase to the school pool?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. So, within March, then, if there's a, if we're in a place to bring to you a recommendation to increase that school pool, so that way, when the dollars go out to schools for school site councils to work with, they know what, how much they're working with. I want to make sure I get head nods across, because I can't read the body language of our reporter colleague over here, and I want to make sure he gives the right communication out to the community. It's good, Joni?
Sure. Can I just add one other thing, too? I mean, from what I read in here, it looks like we've got $10 million in increases. So, if we don't get anything, if that 12 million is only the governor's budget, if we get a compromise of 10, we don't have any increase.
That would be tough. You're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. There is, I do believe the message I've been hearing, the governor's proposal, actually, there's a question of whether it was short and how it calculated the poverty level. Mr. Howey gave me an update that the Senate and the House did approve it. I would be expecting that it might go up, not down, depending on what they did with that poverty level in the funding. So, I'm hopeful that you're not going to see a decrease. I'm going to have to check the news circuit, though. Mr. Howey, if you get an update, let me know. I believe the Senate and the House, though, lightest check, Mr. Howey, that was approved through the Senate and the House. That was the word you got. And we didn't get any word that it went down. So, I'm hopeful, Mr. Mayor, but you're right. There's not a huge margin here.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. Are we all set with the budget update, then? Thank you. Report on motions?
Thank you. It's within packet. The one is itemized out, was a response to Mr. Howey's motion. That's also included, included within the packet.
And then, personnel report?
Thank you. This is-
Sure. I'm sorry. Ms. Darney?
Just wanted to point out under the status on outstanding motions, that, right on the first page, number four, that was the one where I asked back in October about the training program for school site councils. And at the, at the time the status was updated, we had that school site council memo, which is a link. If you go on the site, you can see it. But, basically, that memo was dated December 2. And it's talking about establishing the school site council for every school, which I know we've made some great strides in that, and assessing the pilot training that was done with five schools under Project Learn, and then determining upcoming support. So, I know you mentioned it in the beginning of the meeting, but we really do need an update on where we're going with this. I mean, as you can see, it's putting a lot of responsibility on school site councils for many schools that never even had them, even though they were mandated by law. So, I urge the administration, we need to get this, you know, really moving quickly, get some of those trainings and dates, and determining what additional information our school site councils need.
If you're okay with it, Ms. Martin, I believe it was just an informal request, but I can provide it by way of update to Board Member Dougherty's, sorry, Committee Member Dougherty's motion, if that's-
I think it would be perfectly appropriate for that to be the response, so for it to come back through the full committee.
There's Ms. Phillips' vote. When should the committee expect, what would be reasonable for you to have that done, so the committee knows to look for that?
I think come back next meeting.
About two weeks. So, by next meeting, we'll try to-
Mr. Howey?
Yes. I just want to thank Mr. Guillory there, going around to make sure all the schools are doing the Pledge of Allegiance. And after hearing the Wang kids tonight, I think they're doing a very good job at it. I know there was a lot of missing flags, and the Washington School had a flagpole that was damaged. I guess they're going to be fixing that also. But, it's our responsibility to make sure we have flags everywhere. So, I know you did a nice job for me, and I appreciate the extra work. So, thank you there, Mr. Guillory.
Thank you. Personnel report?
Thank you. This is the standard report provided to the committee for your information.
Any questions? Okay. Well, don't we have one more of the calendar? So, now we have the school calendar? So, what were we going to do with that? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, we did have a policy subcommittee at which the proposed calendars were presented. Based on the motion of the policy subcommittee, we'd like to, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the full committee, that we request the administration implement a survey of our parents and our staff, offering them the options of start time for the school year. We also included questions around Good Friday, maintaining that as a holiday or not, and the day before Thanksgiving. I think from the school, from the subcommittee notes, you should have all the vagaries of what we're trying to find out. So, our hope would be that that survey could go out by the end of this week, if at all possible, beginning of next, at the latest, so that our plan would be, at our next scheduled meeting, we'd be able to take the vote to establish the calendar for next year, so that our families and staff can plan their lives. But, the intent being that we want to get information from those important communities before we make this decision.
Sure. Ms. Motion?
That was my motion. Go ahead. Write that down.
Seconded by Ms. Darney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, motion to approve all the reports of superintendent by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call?
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Seven, six, 2020, 21, school committee meeting dates. Any questions? Sure. Mr. Dillon?
Why are we meeting on vacation weeks? Is there, I mean, is there a timing issue as far as, I don't know. Is it just because we do the first and third?
Yeah. That's absolutely it. And you actually have the, I believe, at times past, you might have canceled this particular meeting, but we had so many needed action items that couldn't roll to the next. So, I think the committee has the authority to cancel any given meeting and has asserted that authority in the past, but this is the first and third.
Can we do, I mean, months of vacation weeks? Can we do the second and the fourth? Is there, does anybody have any input on-
You've got to change the out rules to that, because we used to meet the second, fourth, and then we changed it to the first and third. So-
So, we can't do, we can't just make that during the two months of the year?
Well, let me ask Ms. Martin. She's there.
I would just say, the change was initially made to accommodate a former member, Kevin McHugh's, work schedule, because he worked for another school district that met on the second and fourth. In the interim, I now have a commitment on the fourth Wednesday of every month that, for a board meeting, I need to attend. The committee as a whole gets to, you know, majority rules. If that's what happens, it would be a dramatic change for me, that I would have a very difficult time accommodating right now.
We can accept the calendar and then vote to cancel meetings, but sure, and have-
I would make a suggestion that on those months, we meet the first and the second.
Yeah.
Not, instead of switching it completely to the second and the fourth, because many of us have schedules-
No, I didn't intend on-
Right. But, I think you make a valid point. In the past, we've canceled. In the past, we've rescheduled. If we had members who were going to be out of state, we just would meet on the second Wednesday instead of the third. This time, we just happened to go forward. As the superintendent said, there was a lot of business. Nobody kind of raised a red flag. I'm not going to be around. But, I think we could make that substitution right now. It's far enough in advance to just say that on those months where there's a vacation, we meet the first and the second Wednesday.
Can't do, I, I believe that might be an impossibility to prepare. By the time we're done with this meeting, I'd have to get an agenda posted by Friday for your next meeting. So, I mean, you can think about, I'm out by 9 o'clock today. By the time I get in the office tomorrow, I'd have to prepare the agenda for Friday for the following week. So, if you do back-to-back weeks, I might actually suggest, let's just do one meeting.
On those months?
Yeah. But, I might also say, Committee Member Dillon, you have that authority and that flexibility at any given time. You don't have to take up those conversations now. You could, I believe, Mr. Mayor, maybe this would be a question for you. Could the committee move the one meeting, or they could have a special meeting, right? Cancel one and have a special meeting, or something that allows you that flexibility? You have a lot of authority as a committee on this schedule, though.
I would just suggest we accept the calendar, and then, when the prior months, if it seems like it's a light agenda, we can always cancel.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Sure. Ms. Clark? Oh, all right. So, motion to, right, motion to accept. Ms. Darney, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor? Okay. New business, 8.1 budget transfer. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. That's before you, within your packet. Ms. Turner's available if there are any questions.
No questions. All in favor for roll call? So, motion, sure, motion to accept by Ms. Darney, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call?
Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
8.2, approval of the upgrade to the food services offering for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you. This is actually a, this is an exciting opportunity, but I imagine there's going to be a lot of inquiries. So, I want to recognize two people right away who brought it to my attention. Committee Member Howey brought this up, as well as Committee Member Clark. This has also been a common through line and a common trend among my conversations with students about a need to improve the quality of our offerings. There's two things to keep in mind here. One is we manage our food services as an enterprise fund, meaning the revenue that it generates is the revenue that's expended within a limit. We try, we want to make sure, as part of our agreement, that there's a $1,000 restoration to the revolving account, a million-dollar restoration to the revolving account as part of the plan. This allows that to still occur. This is a mid-year recommendation that does two things for, three things now, based on, again, some insight from Committee Member Clark. Taking the highest frequency items as a recommendation from our food services staff, that's pizza and chicken, upgrading those two items, and then adding the addition of locally grown greens, which I always have a question about, because I don't see a lot of farms here in Lowell. But, there is a definition of locally grown greens. So, we will also incorporate that mid-year. You should expect, and I expect, based on the feedback from our students and families, that we will bring an even more robust recommendation as we can be forward-thinking into next year to upgrade even further, while still being fiscally prudent and remaining within the enterprise fund, so that there's no requirement for the committee to offset costs by taking dollars out of our classroom into food service. So, this does that. It doesn't get us to where we ultimately need to go. We will have a better recommendation for next year, but this is a mid-course correction where we think it will be tangible for this community, and I think well-received by our kids and our staff. You can see the descriptions there. I'm going to opt not to read those out loud of where we're going from and going to, but it's, they're nice upgrades within those areas.
Thank you. Mr. Howey?
Yes. I had a lot of negative things to say today, and I'll try not to. I'll wait to City Life tomorrow morning. But, I do want to say, breakfast with Boyd, that's part of that strategic plan, and I'm very happy that you did that. And you went around checking all the food, and you found out that we were getting a lower-quality food than, let's say, the greater Lowell Technical High Schools, getting a better grade of chicken patties and better pizza. This is what I believe. And now, we're going to get our level of food brought up. Correct?
That's correct. You won't be able to get all the way to Greater Lowell Tech until next budget year.
Okay.
But, that is a great comparison. Same provider, very different response from kids of the quality of food.
And I only have one more thing to say. So, I was going to say something like, in the words of- So I, I was gonna say something like, in the words of, like, we're eating fake food, and hopefully, we don't have any more of this type of food for our children, that we have the best. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick thing, as a member who was on the school committee when we ran our own food service program, and I believe it was in the red to the tune of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, was it that high? It was a lot of money. We didn't run it efficiently. So to look at spending a hundred and fifty-six thousand more, am I reading that number correct? To upgrade the quality of the food and still be able to make money off of the, you know, be able to put money aside from our food service, it's a no-brainer. We definitely need to be moving in this direction. Healthier options for our kids, better tasting options, I think it's a great move in the right direction. Thank you.
Mr. Howie?
Thank you. I just have one more say, thing to say. Mr. Gignac walked out on us here, and he was the one that really created this problem with food. He went out and took a picture one time of some pretty bogus food, and here we are fixing the problem. So again, getting back to breakfast with Boyd, how many times have you had breakfast with the kids in school right now?
So the breakfasts are breakfast with parents, but lunches with kids. I've been to every school within the district to either serve lunch or eat lunch. Most recently, I was at the Sullivan School just two weeks ago during, in their cafeteria with lunch. It's my favorite time of the day. I always excelled at lunch when I was in school.
Well, I wanna thank you, because I know you brought me to the Shaughnessy to eat a chicken patty, and I only ate about a third of it, and I, I hid the rest and threw it away, so I'm glad the quality of food's coming up, and thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you. Quick question from the chair. Do we still provide free lunches?
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely, district-wide.
So how does that work, if you can just give me a quick?
So it's.
It's free to the kids, but we pay for it?
Correct. We get federal reimbursement, so we'll get reimbursement for the food. That's the enterprise fund. So this food service generates revenue based on the data that we collect on our students and the reporting and documentation of that data to the federal government. So we're, am I calculating it all correctly here? Ms. Turner, making sure I check with my CFO. Is that sufficient, Mr. Mayor?
How do you make money if they're paying for it?
All right, so what the, that's about managing the, that's why the revolving account is there, so bills go up and go down. So if you managed it only to basically zero dollars, what you ultimately end up in is a risk scenario where you could be over the budget, where we would have to pay with operating. So they go with forecasts that assume that we're never gonna overspend our account, and if they manage it appropriately, we can project that the account, food service account, remember, that's the account you were asking about before that started to drain, we can project within our funding that that revolving account will never be fully depleted. That allows us to work through the natural variance of bills throughout the district. So you're not making money, so to speak. You're just ensuring that we're remaining within an enterprise fund. They're guaranteeing that they're never gonna need, as a vendor, they're never gonna need additional compensation of product from another fund. It'll always be within the food service.
Okay, thank you. Where are we? So we all set on that? Sure, Ms. Clark?
I just wanna say a quick thank you to Dr. Boyd and others who helped to move this forward and have more nutritious and better tasting food, and the incorporation of the local greens. And I hope, and I'm excited to see what next year will bring, so thank you.
Thank you.
This is a direct case of our, our kids, our kids speak, we listen, the school committee takes action. So I think this is necessary and important, both taste, Mr. Committee Member Howie, and also nutrition, Committee Member Clark.
Thank you. So a motion to accept by Ms. Darney, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call?
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Okay. Convention and conference request, one out of state overnight travel request by Lowell High School. Permission for Krista Early to attend the College Board's Advanced Placement Program, to be held June tenth, twenty twenty, through June eighteenth, twenty twenty, in Kansas City. There's no cost to the school department budget, no substitute is needed. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Darney, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call?
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney? Seven yays approved.
Any other business? Motion to approve? Ms. Darney?
I just wanted to take this point to mention that the Citywide Family Council is having their next meeting, February twenty-seventh, which is a Thursday, and it's gonna be at the Pollard Memorial Library from six to seven thirty. Just wanted to let our families know about that. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Howie. Thank you.